All right, I'm gonna call the special town meeting to order Monday, April 22nd. Uh, this special town meeting is being held for the purpose to seek voter approval for the purchase of a compactor and containers for the transfer station. Um, so we are gonna start with Article One. I need a motion for a moderator.
I'm nominate Tom Lint, Dan Look, second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil for Tom to be our moderator. Uh, all those in favor? Floor is yours.
Everybody hear me okay? Okay, first there's some housekeeping items uh to address, uh, and first one of which is uh to indicate to everyone that is supervising the conduct of this meeting. And the procedures I intend to be guided by the main manual, uh, main moderator's manual that's published by the main municipal association. Secondly, as you may have questions or information requests regarding the article before you for consideration, which information or uh answers might best be accessed from someone who is not a registered voter, uh, who could not speak at this meeting unless this assembly were to grant permission to do so. Uh, I would suggest that you might have questions of our town manager Keith Prefetten, and would entertain therefore a motion to allow Keith to speak at this meeting, which will require a two-thirds majority to pass.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Raise your cards. Anybody opposed? Motion passes. They will move on to the business for of the um special town meeting. Article Two. Shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-five thousand five hundred fifty dollars from fund balance for the purchase of a three-yard stationary compactor, a forty-five yard octagon-style compaction container, and a fifty-yard open top container? There are recommendations for affirmative passage by both the select board and budget board, and below the article, there's a brief explanation of the uh reasons for the article. I'll annotate a motion to approve Article Two.
So, second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any questions? Comments? Mr. Bassett, please. Yes, please.
I see this, the call for this is uh, I'm saying unexpected expenditure. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
And it's going to be not how current system of budgets, but using fund balance. So, what is the fund balance of after this planning is withdrawn?
This town manager give us idea what that is?
Well, the audited balance right now is four million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So, after the removal. I haven't done the math, but. Four, four million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars is what's in our fund balance as audited. What is the, the fund balance? Uh, conservatively, yeah, you're probably correct.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with a comment, quest, question? Seeing then, none, I'll put the vote uh of Article Two to the Assembly of the voters here. All in favor of Article Two, please indicate by raising your cards. Thank you. All opposed. Article Two passes. Meaning that that's the only article before the assembly here. Uh, I understand a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All in favor? All opposed. Great. Thanks, everybody.
All right, that takes care of the town meeting. I'll, I'll give like five minutes in case anybody doesn't want to stick around for a normal selectman meeting. Really?
Good night, guys. Uh, they must be here for the business meeting. We have some from the, around the cottages, as we'll have the rest of our, our agenda for tonight for the selectmen's meeting. Yeah. Yes, nope.
I'll call the regular monthly meeting of the select board to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's make it suitably, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by the common good.
Prove the agenda. Any alterations to that?
I, Ms. Chairman, I have just one. I had one um additional uh Rundle food truck application that came in for Vinegar Hill. Uh, Wieners on Wheels as part of the public hearing.
Anything else? Any committee reports, board unfortunately? Nothing. Seeing none, all entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
As amended.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Velma. All those in favor? All right, we have a public hearing for, looks like, three food truck applications.
Four.
Oh, that's, okay, in addition to those, all right.
You have Vintage Dogs, Main Diner on the Go, Pam and Fam Forking Good Grub, and Wieners on Wheels.
I just wanted to hear you say that again, Keith, so. All right, anything from the public regarding all or any of these food trucks? We have all their information, Keith?
Yes, I provided it in your uh, on your table this evening. They all have uh provided to us all the requirements within the application.
All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And move on. Public forum now. Anybody from the public or from the board have any non-agenda related items? Anything? Going once, going twice? Approval of the minutes, April eighth. The only thing I see, Keith, is the date. April eighth is in our agenda tonight, but April sixth is on the minutes.
Okay.
Which one is, I don't have my calendar in front of me, which day is right?
That was eclipse date.
You get a motion?
Which day is, I don't have my calendar.
It was April eighth.
April eighth.
I make a motion of the correction of the date, the week, seven minutes.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Tom. All those in favor?
One abstention.
It's pass. No Dan, that's right. We have no committee and board reports. Mr. Manager?
I just have one thing to report on. It's, uh, I had the, as you know, our contract planner will be leaving us uh sometime in the upcoming month. Um, I spoke with uh SNP DC in terms of uh providing us another contract planner. Um, met with uh Paul Schumacher and with um Lee J. Uh, they're very confident that they're gonna be able to provide us an additional planner. Paul is. Has a few that are in-house that uh, that we may be utilizing. Um, so as, as um Lee J. transitions out, I'm sure that we'll see a new face. There'll be some other changes or um folks to get used to um, uh, with a new planner, but I don't foresee uh many uh hiccups in the transition at this time.
Thank you. All right, moving on to business. We have um Mr. Rush in attendance tonight?
Yes, he's here.
Can either take the table or, I don't know. Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you can sit if you prefer.
Oh, yeah.
Just bring that right down to you so we can hear you.
All right, is it, it's on, all right.
There you go.
So, um, my name is David Rush. I've been a resident of Rundle for all my life. Um, and yeah, so I've got a proposed resolution that I just passed out to you. I guess you already had a copy of it, too. Um, so as you probably know, uh, across the US and across the world, a lot of people are right now increasing their commitment towards um preventing uh further climate disasters or catastrophe. And we're doing lots and lots of little things here in the United States, but it's becoming increasingly clear that we're gonna need big policies to address the big problems of the warming oceans and atmosphere. So, this article that I've proposed is an opportunity for Rundle to convey to Washington and to Augusta that we as a town support a national carbon pollution reduction policy. Um, so the policy that's referred to in the, in the resolution uh is carbon cashback, which is charges producers a carbon fee and returns the collected money to the American citizens. So, this article's not binding or anything, but it does express again the collective support uh for the idea of carbon cashback pricing, and it sends a signal to our elected representatives. Um, in a nutshell, carbon cashback pricing is a fee charged to producers of fossil fuels where the fuel enters the market, so the ports, the wells, the mines. Um, and all the collected fees would be placed in a carbon, carbon dividend uh trust fund that would be sent out to uh citizens. So, and at that point, so at this point right now, almost all major economists in the United States, over three thousand, six hundred has signed on that it is a the fairest and most effective carbon policy. And in that handout I gave you on the back, there's a list of towns, twenty-five plus. I don't think it's up to date because uh some more towns recently passed this. Twenty-five plus towns in Maine have passed a similar resolution in support of uh carbon cashback pricing. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
David, ju- just for um clarity for me, so in essence, you would uh, you would like to see that the uh select board would have this as an agenda item uh and to encourage or agree to this resolution that you have here. And in doing so, after a vote, send their support to both Washington and uh Augusta in support of it. Is that how, it's not going, it's not per se a, a town meeting, you're not seeking town meeting approval, you're just seeking the select board's approval as a, as an elective board to be in, endorsing this?
Well, so when I wrote it, and I guess this could be a lapse in my understanding, but I, I wrote it as an article or that would go on the town warrant, so in June, and then it would be voted on in the town meeting. If it would be correct to do it the other way through this, like, okay?
Um, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but if, if it, if it's something that needs to go on the warrant, that would be something that the select board could decide whether they, they choose to put it on the warrant.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, what other avenues besides the warrant? Is there a?
What's that?
What are the other alternate, what are the other?
I think that's what I was trying to allude to, whether or not it, this elected boards feels that they want to endorse that and send it along. But it's, it, it appears to me that David would like to have a, a town ri- resolution, if he can get the votes at a town meeting, uh, to get the ta- the, the taxpayers or the voters, the residents to approve it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, as long as, from my perspective, as long as somebody is here at town meeting to answer the questions, because I'm sure there will be questions on this, so as long as somebody is here at a town meeting to answer. And what the general public decide.
Is that something you could do? Could you be a town?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I could definitely be there.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly don't want to put something to the voters, and we don't have an answer, right? Because there's gonna be questions, and we don't want to sit here and say, uh, well, we don't know. So.
Is there a process? Do we have to have a public hearing or something before this goes on the town meeting warrant, or can we just decide to put it on the warrant?
I believe you can decide to put it on the warrant. Um, because you have an open town meeting, there'll be debate and discussion then uh upon it. So, um I think what I'm going to be asking of you uh before the evening's over is to is to finally approve our annual town warrant, which would be, I'd like to try to do it on an off Monday that you have Monday, the twenty-ninth, so it'd be next week. Um, I'm pretty well, I've got a couple more ordinance pieces that need to go on, and then um particularly your discussion tonight with the seasonal cottages folks may um uh finalize whatever decision you would like to make in reference to that decision. Um, and then I'll be prepared to have the warrant uh completed, so you can um, you can decide on it. So, that would be my thoughts. We can talk about it further as we get into the meeting, but uh whether it's, whether it's the twenty-eighth or uh sometime in the first of May, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible.
I see Kennybunk is on this list.
Yes.
Are you in contact with anybody in the Kennybunk area that's? Are they currently receiving the cashback benefits?
So, this is, this is a the idea behind this is that it's expressing support to the lawmakers that we do this. So, right now in Congress, there are ten, I think, current proposed carbon fee and dividend ideas, or just carbon fees. So, it is something that's, that's gonna come nationally at some point. It's not in, it's not currently, um it's not currently approved or anything like that, but it is moving through. So, so what this resolution would do would express to the national lawmakers and the local lawmakers and, and like Senator Collins, King, and uh Goldman and Pingree, that we support this particular brand of carbon pricing where the money, instead of going towards uh other various government programs, but instead be given back to the citizens in the form of dividend checks.
Any other questions for Mr. Rush? Appreciate the information.
Are you, Keith, are you okay with uh this, this language here?
I'm fine with the language. It's, it's a non-binding vote. It would be something that would be done at the, and then if it passes, then we can uh send our endorsement of the annual town meetings vote in support of it.
Do you wanna, you wanna uh something from us tonight on this, or do you want to wait till we start talking about the town and the warrant?
I will, uh, unless I hear strong objections from the board this evening, I'm gonna put it on your, your warrant for discussion, and you can make a decision when you uh sign the warrant, whether you're gonna have it on or not.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, we have uh Aurora Conservation Trust is requesting a community gathering. Oh, Joan.
Joan.
That one may not be on. You may have to just turn it on. There's a button on top when it goes green.
Can you hear me now? Sort of. Goodness. I haven't done this before, so you'll have to tell me what you need from me beyond what you have in front of you.
So, you're looking for permission Friday, May thirty-first. The proposed time is five-thirty to eight-thirty PM. Um, and we're celebrating a loan payoff. So, we, looks like we got some refreshments. That's happening here, of course. Uh, and you're looking for use of the bathrooms? Five-thirty to eight-thirty, doors don't lock until nine, is it?
Uh, they, they lock at eight, but I can uh, I can change that uh to meet the time requirements.
Fifty to seventy people.
That's an ambitious number, but. My understanding is that we currently have an agreement with the town to be able to use the parking lot and paved spaces. So, this request would be um to utilize the bathrooms in addition, and potentially this room if we need a rain plan.
So, if it rains, what's gonna happen in this room? That's what I was looking. I didn't want to fire or play, and there's no room really to play volleyball in here, so.
Well, people's speeches and then tell them about, there's gonna be a lot of fun stuff.
I don't know, maybe we'd move the cornhole inside, but most of our other activities are planned to be outdoors, so we're hoping for good weather.
Looks pretty straightforward. Any questions or concerns? Insurance?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve um ACT's use of here and, and rest of the grounds for this celebration on Friday, May thirty-first from five-thirty to eight-thirty PM. One second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
We have a caper Rundle seasonal cottage potential ordinance amendment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Lawler asked to be on the agenda this evening to discuss with you the amendment that they had proposed to the planning board uh on an additional month's time for use of the uh, of their facilities. I think it's from, instead of May, it would be April to December. Um, I believe they received from the planning board in their review a three-three vote um which sent it uh along to you folks. So, I'll let uh Mr. Lawler sort of fill in the rest of the details, whatever they may be, uh, for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself of this discussion.
Okay.
Related to Ryan.
Okay, sorry, Ryan.
I didn't have a choice. Um, my name is Ryan Lawler. I'm a member of the um Board of Directors at the Cottage Community, Cape Rundle. And uh, we're here to ask um that you allow the proposal for the extension of the seasonal cottages to be um voted on by the town um in June. My fellow homeowners are really just looking for the ability to use the cottages in April as opposed to coming back in May. We believe that it'll add value to the community, the cottages and the people. Um, a lot of the residents visit um local restaurants, local businesses. And we um, we went and we got some signatures from local businesses to show um their support. And everybody that we um went and visited and spoke with um was in favor of the extra month to, you know, help the businesses, their businesses. So, uh, we have a list of signatures from uh local businesses. And we also received um support from the local chamber of commerce. Uh, the extension, it pitch, it will not change any current standing with the school system or put um any other burden on the town. I know that the planning board was hesitant um based on the developer comeback in the, in the past has looked for an extension of the season um previously, but this is strictly coming from the homeowners, and after speaking with them, there is no desire to do anything further than the month of April. It would be a burden on the HOA fees. Would have to have the community center open longer. Um, would have to have increased plowing for the, each driveway. Uh, most of the homeowners live in southern states in the winter, and there's really, there's no desire to come back, but April, it's a being in a spring. And they'd like to be able to come up and use the facilities and their cottages and spend money locally.
You do know that our largest snowstorms in history have been in April, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But they melt quick.
Uh my first question would be water. Uh is that shut off when you guys leave December, whatever it is?
So the water, it it's um voluntary by the homeowners. They can hire the plumber to um either drain it down to the street or they sh- the homeowners all shut them down, shut the water off inside the cottages. So there's no water running besides the community center, uh which we shut off the outside spigots and such.
So while while the residents are there like in December and we get a cold spell, there's no issue of anything freezing in the cottages, right? I mean, those are all insulated well enough.
They're insulated, they're they're built to be year-round residents. Um they they have R twenty-one on the walls, forty-eight on the ceilings. We ask homeowners to keep the heat at fifty-five just in case. So the water shut off. Um heat's running.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly less of a chance of that in April, but.
Are they sprinkled?
Uh, community center is, but the home, the homes are not.
How about uh we got Andy here tonight, he's our fire chief, but
Yep.
Andy, what else do we have for fire suppression up in there that, is there anything that would be affected at all in? You have any concerns about increased ambulance volume or anything like that for the month?
Jason?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I know that a lot of the people up there in the cottages live in the southern states, especially Florida, because Florida has excellent tax benefits for senior citizens. They have to live in Florida for at least six months of the year in order to receive those benefits. So you're going to get uh perhaps people from Massachusetts and New Hampshire who just want to get away for a weekend or come up here for a weekend using their cottages for that extra month of April. Because otherwise, the ones from Florida are going to make sure they stay in Florida there six months because they don't want to give up those benefits, those tax benefits down there. So I have no problem with with this extra month.
While we're on the subject of taxes, and I know this is the elephant in the room, and you guys have had issues with taxes, but is there any issue with? I mean, when this was approved as a town seasonal development, did the tax assessor, I mean, was this based at all on a eight-month cycle and that's how the taxes were assessed or is?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Nothing would change the fact of increasing taxes and?
No, that was um
No.
The planning board had asked that to look into that. Changes that would be that would be uh
That wouldn't impact anything on the TIF contract?
No, it would not.
Yeah, shouldn't. I certainly don't see an issue with it. I think, you know, it brings more money into the town, so.
Do you want a motion on that?
Well, it's got to go to town vote, so what's the difference between this and our last?
You'll be uh you'll be agreeing to it or disagreeing to it on your on your draft warrant.
Right.
Um and I have placed it on your warrant for consideration, so.
Already?
Yes, it's there.
Yeah, this is going to be up to the taxpayers, but.
Yeah. I I think you'll certainly get support from this board, so.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thanks, guys. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. So we have four food truck approvals tonight. Keith, do any of these coincide with the previous ones that we've approved?
No, they do not.
And none of them make more than three at a time?
That is correct.
Okay. Does want to do them as all four or individually or?
Well, I have a question, another elephant in the room. Two hundred foot limit that we talked about in our ordinance, does this come into play?
Not as far as I'm concerned. It was proved, uh conditional use proved approval by the planning board. I don't think it comes into play.
The only issue would be the the verbiage that we raised last meeting of like direction of travel versus.
Right, you know, uh I mean, um I know that when they do that, they 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 go direction of travel, so they'll be you know, if anybody is is looking at uh checking length from a intersection, it will be down the road, up the driveway. Sort of like that kind of uh scenario.
Well, the two hundred I I guess that really doesn't matter. We can talk about that later, but you know, your your point is this was approved by the planning board before we even, before the other ordinance come in, so we're so we're good.
Well, I think the other ordinance was in play, and I think that's the description that we have. I mean, when the planning board approved it, they were gonna, they were going on under their performance standards, which did have, did not have any of the two hundred feet within an intersection within them. So they they acted in good faith, they presided a process. Um they approved that, then it came to us. Um and at that point, I think we just looked at it as being approved by the planning board, we moved on.
Right, and we didn't even think to look at the two hundred foot. Because it's certainly within the two hundred foot.
Only one, only one spot is within two hundred feet.
I just, you know, being the devil's advocate here, because this could get brought up as we discussed.
What you can certainly do tonight is you can make alter alterations to any approvals and indicate within the approval process that the that lot that we had the diagram from last week will not, that spot will not be used. Use the one closer to the building and use the one that's further in the parking lot. I think that would meet that two hundred foot requirement. If you have questions about the number three spot, which is on the east side of the uh non-compliant um theater sta- stage.
And who's going to enforce it?
Again, that would have to be enforced, but through code. And it would be, it would be whether we had a complaint or whether we had an observation of it being utilized.
Not that I should comment, but if if we adopt that language, which allows for an applicant to request a um a reduction in that. Right, like that spot could be.
Right, I I get that.
Okay.
Right, but that's not there now, right?
Right, I am, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we almost have the cart before the horse here. Right, we should have done the ordinance review first and then.
Well, I think you could put the restrictions on. If you don't want that spot to be used, you can note it in your motion tonight. And then when we inform the the folks that get approval and Vinegar Hill folks, we'll indicate to them that that spot cannot be used.
All right, looking for a conditional motion.
Just one quick, uh I'll make the motion, but I got a quick question, but I'll make a motion that we approve with the condition that doesn't come within two hundred feet of an intersection.
Unless they come back to us. Yeah, after the ordinance, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's not in our ordinance now, but.
You have a question?
Yeah. If the, that third spot, the spot that's within the two hundred feet, um is is that happening at the same time as the other, the other two going on? And I don't have the map here in front of me, so is that a separate occasion?
No, I I'm I'm not following. There are three locations that could be used on the property. I don't, at no time have I indicated or have I seen in the prints that there's more than two food trucks there. So um
That answers my question.
Okay.
If there's more than two, then we have to tell them, don't use that.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. All right, conditional motion by Dan to approve all four?
Yeah.
Second by Velma. Any more discussion? All those in favor? One abstention. All right, now we have a food truck ordinance review. And really, the only change is that one paragraph.
Well, Dan had come up with a couple of the comments after he saw the um the draft, so I'll have him weigh in on those um with you folks, but it's essentially the the uh draft that I have for you from April eleventh provides the definition of intersection uh which is new. There would be an area where two or more public or private ways serving more than ten lots slash units which intersect with a public street. Uh and then the other piece was within the performance standards uh under section E, you um wish to continue to have no food trucks may conduct business within two hundred feet of street intersections, provided, however, that the select board may, upon the request of an applicant, reduce this performance standard upon submissions to the board of sufficient substantive evidence that the proposed reduction should not affect the safety concerns promoted by the listed performance standard. And then I think this is where Dan would like to maybe make uh a new F um which would say seating may be provided, but is limited to sixteen seats, and then change all the other alphabetical definitions.
That was its own item before.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Okay.
I said that.
Okay, so I'll make sure that we make that notation.
What was the other one? There was one other thing that I had sent you. There were two things that. I think it was just a minor edit.
I don't remember. Those are the only changes that I that I saw, and if they seek your approval, then I will place this on, this is not on the warrant right now. I will place this on the warrant as a separate warrant article for modification to this standalone ordinance.
I will say that so far the food trucks that they have had there have been over next to the ticket window um off the uh what I call Route one A, the old post road.
So you'll make those changes, Keith?
I will, and I'll present them uh at your, when we decide when we're going to approve the warrant.
Anybody have anything else? On this?
Oh, no, the the other one, Keith, was just on D, to get rid of the hyphen on D after no, it was just a grammical thing.
On item on section D under performance standards?
Section no, yeah.
Oh, gotcha. Moving on? All right, I need a motion for payables, just payables.
Some more?
Motion by Dan, seconded by Velma, all those in favor? Any other business?
The only other piece I had was um again, what I alluded to earlier was trying to establish a date to for us to come together to review the draft annual town meeting warrant and subsequently seeking your signatures on it. I was trying to maybe go on next Monday, the twenty ninth or maybe uh May sixth, which would be the first Monday uh in May. Our scheduled meeting, I think, is the thirteenth. So it would be one of those two open dates before the thirteenth. We're getting ready to go to print with the town report, so I wanted to make sure that we meet the town report deadline as well.
So twenty ninth would work better. Does that work for everybody?
Twenty ninth?
Dan?
Uh, yeah. Yes.
Twenty ninth it is.
You haven't gotten anything different from the R S U, right? It still stays the same?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think their second reading was tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I haven't heard anything different. Uh you, if I do, I'll let you folks know.
Anything else? Anything else in public we missed? Terry, Andy? Nothing? Seeing none, I will entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved at seven, seven forty-seven.
All those in favor?